The Select Board meeting of April 11th, 2025, Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting, or today's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in an entirely hybrid, entirely virtual format, consistent with modifications made to the open meeting law by the Legislature of the Commonwealth. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting will be able to join the Zoom webinar that is posted on the town website along with the agenda. Members of the public are also reminded that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting in the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as no one can interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings, the only recording we are aware of is the one being done with the Zoom by the benefit of town employees and PAC TV.
Thank you. First, we'll go right to the agenda item. Mr. Canty, would you be as kind to read the ballot question and what we're doing here?
Sure. Tonight's, today's meeting is primarily in regards to a ballot question being proposed by the Police Department, and it reads, "To consider placing a binding question on the ballot for the 2025 annual town election regarding the Civil Service Law, Chapter 31 of the Massachusetts General Law for the, for the Police Department." Question, "Shall this town revoke its 1917 acceptance of the Civil Service Law, Chapter 31 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the Police Department?" A yes vote would allow the town to establish its own hiring, promotional, and disciplinary appeals process for the Police Department without being subject to the Civil Service Law, which addresses these matters statewide without community-specific criteria. A no vote would make no changes to the process for hiring, promoting, and disciplinary appeals processes for the Police Department, and the town would continue to follow established statewide criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. Mr. Brandisi?
Yes, so good evening. Good afternoon, everybody. If, if you don't mind, I'd like to provide a little bit of background on this ballot question, and then I'm going to turn over the rest of the presentation to Chief Flynn. So just by way of background, as Selectman Canty read, this is a binding ballot question. It's a question that we're asking all our registered voters to vote to allow the Plymouth Police Department to come out of civil service law. The reason why we're going to the ballot, for those that are interested, because I know we've had some questions, why we are not going to town meeting, civil service law requires that, in order to exit civil service, you must exit civil service in the same way in which you entered. So, we've done a lot of research, Connor Anderson, Turner McKay, and others, Town Clark have done research, and what they have determined is that in 1917, by way of a ballot, the town entered civil service for the Police Department. In 1917, on March 3rd, I believe, there were 658 yeses and 605 nos. And so, the other question that folks will ask, why are we waiting until a Friday afternoon to take this vote? The answer to that question is that, and the Chief will go through the history on this, but the Chief and, and others have been working very closely with the Unions to come up with policies and procedures as to what it would look, what the Police Department procedures would be if we were exit civil service, and so, as you can imagine, that takes many, many months. This, this morning, the Police Superior's Union voted in support of exiting civil service. This morning, 20 votes yes, one vote no. Last night, the Patrolman Union voted 59 yeses to seven nos. So, we really wanted to wait for the Unions to take their vote so that we had certainty that we were working in partnership and collaboration with the two Unions before we presented this to the Select Board. What you'll hear from the Chief today is, over the last six months, he's been working with the Unions on these policies and procedures. What you'll also hear is, starting in February, they, they brought this forward to both myself and the Assistant Town Manager, and that's when we started negotiations. Although today, we're talking about civil service, you'll hear from the Chief today that this is really about recruiting police officers and retaining our police officers. We have a three-pronged, three-pronged strategy in order to recruit and retain qualified police officers moving forward. Civil service is one of those, one of the legs of that stool. The second is increasing the education stipend, and the third would be changing to a four-and-four schedule. Right now, the Police Department works a four-and-two schedule. So, those are our three strategies that we plan on implementing over the next couple of years in order to recruit highly-trained police officers. And I do want to say before I end that I personally spoke to Civil Service today at a phone call with their Deputy Director. I asked them what an expectation is from the town if we were to exit civil service, and they had said to me that they don't have any records of any municipalities. What the burden of proof is on the town to demonstrate how we entered civil service, and, and then again, how we would exit civil service. So, based upon the research and what I mentioned earlier, we are confident that we entered civil service again in 1917. And so, assuming that the Board approves this ballot question for May, and assuming that the voters vote in the affirmative, we would then submit all that backup material to Civil Service so that we can exit appropriately. So, that's the background. I'll turn over the Civil Service presentation to the Chief.
Thank you, Derek. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Just as a background, I'd sent the memo, I'm going to read to you in the past, but just for clarification, for the past several years, the Plymouth Police Department, like many other local and national police departments, has seen a steep decline in those interested in careers in law enforcement that has resulted in staffing shortages that had never, that nobody's ever before experienced. In, for example, in FY '22, we ended the year short 11 patrol officers. We were short six in FY '23, and eight in FY '24. Currently, I have eight student officers that are scheduled to graduate in June, and two more are scheduled to graduate in September. And even with those 10 in the academy, I'm still six short. In addition to that, I have five scheduled retirements that'll be taking place before the end of the calendar year. As a Civil Service Department, our options for hiring are limited by the archaic rules that no longer suit the needs of the Police Department, including limited examination dates, restrictive residency requirements, limited lateral transfer options, and little to no marketing programs that assist affected municipalities. With the challenges posed by Civil Service recruitment, the Civil Service recruitment process, we have seen a steep decline in those taken entry-level exams resulting in quickly exhausting the eligible candidate list before filling our needs. As a result of the Civil Service Commission's inability to assist in the challenges of recruitment and hiring, a number of reforms were instituted in December, but they don't do enough, and in some cases have made the process even more cumbersome. In an effort to address recruiting, hiring, and retention needs of the Police Department, both Unions, as part of the collective bargaining agreement that was ratified and came into effect last July, both Unions agreed to begin discussions with the town on ways that, that we could exit civil service to make the recruitment and retention process even more palatable. So, that brings us here today. If you please indulge me with a PowerPoint slide that I have. Go ahead, Jade. So, just a little bit background, Civil Service was created in 1884 to increase fairness and decrease the political patronage of government jobs. The town of Plymouth, as we discussed, voted to accept the provisions of civil service in 1917. Next slide, Jade. So, with the current civil service hiring process, as stated, is limited exam schedule. The requirement to take the examination is either a high school diploma or a GED and a driver's license. It's a standardized, standardized multiple-choice exam that really doesn't reflect the skills and qualities needed for the police to work today. It can take five months to get the list certified, and once we get the list, the list is the list, and we cannot alter that list without a legal basis for doing so. The list does not account for specific needs of individual agencies or municipalities, especially when it comes, when it deals with the demographics. Next slide. So, once the established, once established, the requisition is required that we see the list based upon the number of vacancies, which in years, we've seen a steep decline in the number of candidates. Each candidate on this will then get a notice. They have a week to come in and sign the list. If they do sign the list, they get an application packet. If they return the packet, then we begin the background check. Then, if we approve, if we deem the candidate appropriate, we'll invite him back for interviews that are recorded. Next slide. If the candidate's not deemed suitable, we ask for voluntary removal from the process. However, what happens if they don't voluntarily, voluntarily remove themselves from the process, we have to go through a bypass. Bypasses can be appealed. They're lengthy, it's a lengthy process, and it costs a lot of money with legal fees. Civil Service can overrule the bypasses that will, that in turn require the agencies to accept the candidate which, which the agencies have already deemed not to be suitable. If the candidate is determined suitable, they're given a conditional offer of employment. Next slide, Jade. Then they must complete the medical, psychological, and physical ability exams, and only then they are eligible to be placed on the academy waiting list. All, every, all the prior steps must be done before we can enroll them in the academy. And what we're finding because of the, the scheduling problems, there are not seats always readily available when the candidates are, and it's not uncommon to wait months for the candidate to start the academy. And as part of civil service, we cannot accept transfers of veteran officers from non-civil service departments or colleges or universities. So, the state has been a steep decline, and I mentioned these numbers before. Just shows the shortages we've been dealing with the past several years. Next, next slide. So, the last civil service list we dealt with, I had 43 names on it. That means 43 residents of the town of Plymouth took the exam. Once notified, only 20, 21 of them came in and signed the list. All 21 were given the application packets, only 12 returned the applications, and after the additional background investigations and interviews, 10 received the conditional officer's employment. So, you can see, it's like a 25% success rate here. We're not the only police department in the state having this problem, or the country for that matter. And you see in the last bullet here, many, many have deemed the civil service process an impediment to recruitment, hiring, and retention, and already more than 35 police departments have opted to leave civil service, including Brookline, Lexington, Needham, Wellesley, Framingham, Natick, Franklin, and Carver, just to name a few. So, this wasn't something I brought up on my own. The union leadership has voiced their concerns about the recruitment and retention because our shortages adversely affect them. They agree that civil service inhibits the recruitment of high-quality candidates, and as stated before, they agreed to discuss opting out of civil service pursuant to the, the last collective bargaining agreement. Together, myself and the, both Unions developed a draft policy for the recruitment and hiring of viable candidates that also addresses the promotion and disciplinary process, and they had been in discussions with the town to improve the recruitment and retention strategies. There are many benefits leaving civil service. It allows us greater flexibility within the hiring and promotional process. We will not, we will no longer have to hire off of a statewide layoff list for other candidates. We can determine the dates of the hiring and promotional list. We can, we can set our own eligibility guidelines, something more than a GED or high school diploma, if you wish, and we can determine, determine our own preferences for additional points, including residency, military language proficiency, etc. You know, other chiefs I've spoken to, they, they found that they get a larger, larger candidate pool. We can diversify our workforce without some of the barriers currently placed from civil service. We can do our own recruiting. We have, will have increased flexibility to hire laterals already trained and experienced. And we can incorporate our community into, into specific criteria into the promotional process, and we can change our promotional exams that are more accurately gauged than officer suitability, other than just remembering of the textbook. Next, next, Jade. And again, just some more benefits. You can read right there, it seems the benefits outweigh the benefits leaving civil service outweigh staying in. And to address, there were some concerns about the, you know, discipline issues, how that'll be addressed. Most of those issues now, now addressed, already addressed in the current collective bargaining agreements. Next slide. And that's it. I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for the Chief? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thanks for the presentation. When you and I talked, I had expressed a concern that that, that leaving civil service could at least give the appearance of the ability for nepotism, favoritism, a reduction in the, the quality of candidate. And you were able to assuage those concerns. Could you share with anyone who may be paying attention today the, the way, the manner in which you, your department, your command team, and union leadership will set those issues aside?
Sure. I believe that when civil service was first established, they didn't have the number of agencies that we do nowadays, statewide agencies, including the State Ethics Commission, MCAD. We have very robust fraternization, department-wide fraternization policies. The town has their own fraternization policies. So, I think the concerns, when civil service was first enacted, have been dealt with appropriately with these other, other agencies. The hiring process will be part of the collective bargaining agreements. So, once they're in there, they're in there to stay.
And you, you touched on this in the presentation, but many of the protections that stop that sort of behavior is going to be incorporated into those agreements, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yep. So, much, much of civil service protection is going to be placed into that.
Essentially, essentially what we did, and many police departments did, is they took this civil service language and just cut and paste it into the collective bargaining agreements. The only protection that they're going to lose now, if there's an extreme disciplinary problem or issue, the employee or the officer has an option to go to the Civil Service Commission for a hearing or a, an arbitrator. So, not being a member of civil service, their only option would be before an arbitrator, which truth be told, instances I've witnessed, the arbitrator, the affected employee typically goes for the arbitrator as opposed to the commission.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief. In terms of, I have a few questions. Number one would be, could you highlight the, I know, in talking about this, when we had this in the executive, the the issue of not just hiring new officers that have never been a police officer in another department before, but the, the ability to, the increased ability to hire existing officers, accepting transfers from other, other departments. My understanding is that about 130-something departments remain in civil service out of 433 or so throughout the Commonwealth. And, you know, talk about the advantages of hiring a, a already-trained officer from another department versus, you know, bringing someone for the first time.
Sure. So, right now, if, if I wanted to seek a lateral transfer of a veteran-trained officer from another, from another police department, I can only do that from a civil service agency unless an officer from a non-civil service agency happens to take the civil service test and scores high enough on our list to be taken over. Right now, the training, as I said, I have eight, eight student offices in the academy scheduled to graduate in June. They will have another six months or so field training riding with this veteran officer. So, I wouldn't, I won't have them accessible to me probably till Thanksgiving, next Thanksgiving. The ability to hire veteran officers, number one, I don't, they can go on the road pretty quickly. They can go on the road pretty quickly. You know, once they have a short, shorter field training period in our, in our department, learn our policies, rules, regulations and how we do things. And in some cases, it's just a couple of weeks. You know, the. The, the money that we don't have to spend on them for the academy training, um. For all the weeks that they're in the academy, we get, we'd be able to get more bang for our buck. I mean, I'm already seeing it now, um. I've already lost a couple of officers who, to departments who are no longer in civil service or. Um. You know, just. Because it's easy now, they can. Pretty much without, without hindrance. Right now, if this, between civil service departments, if I were just to take an officer from another department. Uh, that chief would have to sign off an okay. To release that officer. And right now, many departments having the same problem I'm having. Uh, reluctant to do so. You know, enough, enough or nothing. You know, sometimes you question yourself, why is, why is the other chief so such in a hurry to get, sign off on that officer if he's such a good candidate, you know, so. You have to be wary, you have to be wary of that.
And you, you can lose an officer, like one of your officers could go to a non-civil service department.
Right.
But they, but you can acquire from a non-civil service department.
Correct, unless they take the civil service exam and score high enough on the list.
Right, right, but with the diminishing field of. There's a diminished incentive for officers, because my understanding is it's expensive and time-consuming to get the books and study.
Right.
That, so there's a diminished incentive um, to do that. And so you have, you have eight in the academy?
Yeah, they're in the Falmouth Academy right now, and they're scheduled to graduate in June.
And so they're in the academy for. Six months each approximately, so.
Little more than about five months, yes.
Five months, so with. Eight officers, that's almost four. Full year positions being paid just for training, without ever stepping foot even in a training. In this department on, on Plymouth Street as a.
And because of civil service, I started this process with these candidates last July. So it'll be eighteen months. Before they're even on the road from the initial, my first interaction with, with them.
And how much, when an officer is leaving your department, I, I imagine it varies based on circumstance, but say it's a. It's not due to an injury or other unexpected emergency, but rather. They're just either retiring or they're, um. I, I guess the two most common would be retirements and then. People voluntarily resigning or transferring. Uh, how much notice do you usually get for those types of incidents?
Uh, the ones I've left have been very, very kind to me, if you would, they, they'll give me two weeks. Um. To reti, you know, I consider that kind, you know, rather than just, you know, dropping their badge on my desk like you see in the movies and, you know, they're done, but. As far as, as far as retirees, they've pretty much given me. A good advance notice. Uh, of their. Tend to dates.
Okay, but it, so the two week, I mean, that's like standard in a lot of different.
Yes.
So you can lose an employee just as quickly as any other type of business.
Correct.
But you're, you can't acquire a new one to replace them for.
No.
A year, eighteen months, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Mister Blatza?
Think you're still muted, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Just so everybody knows, this is something that it's. It's an antiquated system. And you know, I saw. A few emails that I. You know, that were questioning. You know, who are you going to hire, nepotism, all that stuff, we already have all those things in place. And basically. The, the employees, the police officers have all the protections in place that they would have in civil service. So this is, this, chief, if I understand, and I think I do. We need to, we need to get out of civil service. To, to be able to hire uh, more officers and more quickly. And I get all that. And the, the part about bringing in veteran officers, trained officers, is going to save the town a ton of money. Because we don't have to, we don't have to pay for their training. And that's a, 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 a big, big part of this. The unions have agreed to it, and I've talked to, to a lot, a lot of the guys. And, and I believe, and you tell me if I'm wrong. But they're going to be the, the best recruiters you're going to have to get police officers to come to work for Plymouth.
Right, that. Part of the conversation we had is starting a recruitment team. And it was, it was actually brought, brought uh, forth by Kyle Kreitzer, the president of the Patrolman's Union. Um. You know, he, he has a host of ideas, um. To go out and act with it to different job fairs and. You know, college, uh, college communities and, and whatnot, but. Yeah, he, he seemed to be very, very excited about it, so, yeah.
And it, and the other thing is just to make it clear again, because I saw an email and I don't know why. Well, I know I have to, it's a resident, so I want, I, I have to read them, I have to listen to them. To keep, to talk about executive session. Why a ballot question would be an executive session? It wasn't for the ballot question. And to make it real clear out there, hopefully these folks are listening. Uh. Is that's because this was a collective bargaining issue, we had to. Uh, get the, uh, the, the two associations uh, to agree to this. So it's collective bargaining. And there was some give and take, they wanted it, I think as much as the town wanted. But there was some, there was a shift change. Also, there was an educational incentive, and let me tell you about that twenty-five percent master educational incentive. We had to do that because we're not going to get. Uh, offices from other departments with masters to come for a pay cut, they're not going to come here. So this, this, again, everything that was negotiated, I think was, was, it was good for the town, it's good for the offices. And in the long run. I think the overtime costs that we're going to be spending this summer. Because we don't have the offices, hopefully this will help alleviate some of those costs. So I want all the people out there that, 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 well, that think that this is going to cost us a lot of money, it's not. This is going to save us money in the long run, we're going to have a more qualified, more professional police officer on the streets. So uh, and, and so I'm, I'm very happy. Uh, the time manager yourself worked this out, I'm glad that there was some union negotiation. And uh, and, and they worked together, and we had to get it done. Uh, by today, because if not, it wouldn't get on the ballot, and then would have to go to the next election. So we would have just pushed this off too far out. So. Uh, good job, I hope, I, I, I'm urging that the, that the. Residents in May just vote for this, that. You know, and really, they have, another thing is, this was pushed in the residence. You have close to a month, there's a month before the election to get up to speed on this and read about it. And so, anyway, I, I'm very happy this is getting done.
Thank, thank you, you know, kudos to both unions to recognizing the problem. And being willing to, to think outside the box, if you will, to. To correct it, and it's essentially, it's for the betterment of the entire community. Uh, we, we've been running on quite a few no, number of officers short for the past several years and. It's, it's not good for anybody, it's not good for the, for my officers who uh. Have been working an excessive amount of overtime, forced overtime, if you will. And uh, we, we, we just want to deliver the best product we can to the community.
And then the officers want that too. The officers want that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mister Mahoney?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, I just. Given the time constraints in the. How unusual it is to have a Friday afternoon meeting at four, uh, exclusively remote. The votes from the unions last night. The deadline we were up against today. I just hoping that we can circle back to this topic, uh. Tuesday night or maybe the following Tuesday with the chief in attendance for, for those members of the public. Or unable to attend today and have questions so that. You know, we can answer anything, uh, you know, in an open and transparent manner. You know, whatever they, whatever concerns um, they might have, whether it's um, you know, the board. Chief Flynn or Derek, uh, the town manager. So that um. You know, nobody misses out on the opportunity.
I'm sorry, Mister Quint, I'm also, you've extended the uh, the invitation to both union presidents as well. Um, just so. Um. People can hear, hear their opinions as well.
Okay, so I'd like to thank the chief and town management and Mister Kreitzer and Mister Higgins. Um, for their work and listening and their word and trust, a lot of that goes. You know, back to the old school around town. Um, if they have your, your trust and your word. Um, you can work together and that's what it's really all about. I put quite a bit into this, um. And it was a pleasure with uh, Mister Krei, Kreitzer, I believe it is, and Mister Higgins. Uh, it was a pleasure working with both of them, and like John said. Um, the reason the meeting is tonight, it has to be, I believe, by Master General Law, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek. Thirty-five days prior to the election, so that's why we're having it Friday. The reason it was posted a couple of days ago. Okay, was because we have to advertise our meetings forty-eight hours in advance. Now, in the event that one of the groups or both the groups. Uh, said no, they weren't in agreement with this. Then we would have pulled this meeting, but then we wouldn't have been able to go forward with it, so if it. Makes sense, or if it's a little confusing. Um, don't blame the board, that's Master General Laws, I believe, and, and that's what we follow. And I know it's not always easy to follow. So that's why I'm just touching on it a little bit, but. I'm glad we're in this place. I hope it's better for all our officers and the department and the town as a whole. And let's move forward and see what we can do, let's get the right numbers and the, the right manpower. That being said, anything else, if not, we'll take a motion.
I would be prepared to make a motion if my colleagues have no comments.
I'll second.
Motion by Mister Canty, second by Mister.
Yeah, I would make a motion to include the, this ballot question on the uh, May seventeenth election warrant. And also approve the. Uh, the text of the question that is included on the posted agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Mister Canty, second by Mister Blatza, discussion? Mister Canty?
Uh, yes, if I uh, I just wanted to highlight that. Uh, I appreciate all the work that the unions did in a short timeframe to get this turned around as well. Uh, and I, I, I do believe that uh, this is the best course of conduct. For the uh, the town to meet the needs, and if we wait another year, it's only going to get worse. Whether it's a police department or another town department or a. Uh, an office building or a hot dog stand, if you have too few employees and the work gets put on the remaining employees. You lose employees quicker and quicker, as we heard from the chief, you can lose an officer in. Two weeks to a resignation. Uh, but he can't replace them for twelve to eighteen months, which is. A very significant uh, gap between a vacancy and replacement in, under the current system. So I think this is the best path forward, the timeframe. Is what the timeframe is due to constraints beyond our direct control. Um, but I think uh, this is the best path and I'm, I'm. Hopeful that the residents will see that uh, over the ensuing month as well, thank you.
Now, how do you vote?
I will vote yes, there's no other discussion.
Mister Blatza?
Yes.
Mister Golden?
Yes.
Mister Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Jade, is there anyone wishing to speak on a public comment?
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman.
Sorry, go ahead, Derek.
There's just one more item, it's, it's smart to see. Um, the board needs to determine the order of questions, uh, my recommendation would to. Place the civil service question as question number one. And then the save the bay petition as question number two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mister Canty?
Mister Mahoney.
Mister, like, I couldn't, wasn't sure, Mister Mahoney, second by Mister Blatza. Discussion? Mister Canty?
Yes.
Mister Blatza?
Yes.
Mister Golden?
Yes.
Mister Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous also. Now, let's see, anybody wishing to speak on a public comment?
Yes, we have one person, Mark Paulsonelli.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks, Mark Paulsonelli, precinct one, um, I appreciate the chief's presentation, I think it explained well. Um, why he wants us to consider leaving the civil service. Um, I just have a few, I guess, questions or requests for information. If the board could consider uh, making these things public in order to help voters make an informed decision, um. On the ballot, the first is, uh, I'd like to see, and I think many other voters would, the, the draft policies that were mentioned, discarding, uh. Regarding hiring, retention, disciplinary action and promotion that was mentioned in the presentation. It would help us to see, we know what the policies are with the civil service, it would help us to see what the policies will be. From the town if we leave the civil service. The second would be, do we have any data from non-civil service towns, or even better. Uh, towns that have somewhat recently left the civil service as to. What retention and recruitment was before in the civil service, and then what it was once they left. And then I was wondering if we could get any kind of cost analysis, obviously. With the civil service, your recruitment costs are going to be lower because you're given a list of eligible candidates versus having to. Do your own recruitment. Um, the, the presentation did mention there is a, a cost to. Uh, negotiating or um, arbitrating disciplinary appeals or bypass appeals, so you know, a cost analysis to kind of. Give us a sense of, is this going to be an increasing cost and a decrease or something closer to a break even? Um, would also be helpful uh, to. Uh, come to a decision on the ballot question, um, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Motion to adjourn? So moved? All in favor?
A vote yes?
Yes.
Mister Blatza? Charlie? I can see him move. Okay, and John?
Yeah, about that, yes.
Oh, thank you, Charlie. John?
John had to hop off.
Okay, all right, thank you for watching, we'll see you Tuesday, have a good weekend.